That would be my suggestion.
So we need to take a motion like that of Senator Council on this time?
Yes, the request would be to request the council to adopt the resolution of interest. This doesn't mean an obligation.
Right.
A resolution of interest and authorize funds for appraisers for both the, you know, the sale of a portion of Carroll County property and a acquisition of other property in exchange.
But they don't commit to anything, all right?
And does not commit to anything.
So they can do that, then you can talk to that gentleman on there and then probably involve.
There's no dollar amounts mentioned.
Right.
The threshold that you have to do there is ten thousand dollars. If property is worth more than ten thousand dollars, then the council is involved in giving their blessing to even starting the process.
Makes sense to me. It makes sense to me.
So the motion would be to request the council to adopt the resolution of interest and authorize funds for appraisals.
Would either of you wish to make such a motion?
Okay.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second.
To request the council to adopt the resolution of interest and authorize funds for payment for appraisals for your needs to be paid, paid appraisals for the exchange of a portion of the remaining Carroll County farm property for another. You have the identity of what the other property is?
Yes.
What is it? I put that in here.
Well, I don't have, I don't.
I mean, not the legal description, but it is.
The trucking company located east of or west of.
Yeah, that's.
Property immediately west, west of the Carroll County Highway.
Okay, okay. That's good enough.
Single tree.
Single tree.
Single tree.
Now, in looking at that, I just have one more question. And that is, there, say there's seven acres there. I don't know if there is. There's something like that there. We don't know that we want to sell the whole seven acres, or we don't know that he wants to buy the whole seven acres. So when we do an appraisal, how do we, do we have to have that?
It doesn't have to be in the request that you're making now. That would be, I mean, the description of it will be provided later. You can make a decision on that. You would be asking them just for the concept of selling a portion of the remaining part of the Carroll County property. You don't have to define that yet, but you will have to, obviously. You could have the appraisals made in terms of a per acre.
That's what I was gonna ask.
It could be, doesn't have to be legally described. You could get a per acre appraisal. On that way, you can work with, decide.
That'd be the best way. Here's a twice hundred acre.
If we, that just goes solve a lot of problems. Doesn't imagine any place in that corner, something like, probably root problem.
Well, there's a root problem.
Yep, you can do that. You don't have to specify that.
Okay, so we've got a motion and a second on the floor. All in favor of that motion, please say aye. Motion passed. Now.
Can I get back to that?
Right. But we still have to go, I know this is not gonna happen this year, but are we gonna lease that property out?
Well, maybe we might.
Because, you know, it ain't gonna happen right away. It's government. But, you know, it's just gonna sit there. We'll have to mow it and maintain it, or at least have somewhere going with our bush over there. You know, farmer gonna push on it.
I guess I would want to look at this process for just a little bit and see if we think there's a chance of it.
Right.
What is the time we have on?
Well, I mean, guy likes to.
In March.
That way you can give the term of season and stuff like that.
So do you want this on the agenda for February or week of scratch?
As soon as, not a week.
The county farm lease?
Your question is?
The county farm lease, so it's gonna be on the back burner now?
It's on the back burner.
Okay. I do have something else.
All right.
Before you start with the van or the corner, can we have the, there's a teacher out here that needs to get back to school, so he has the prom application down at the bottom.
Yes.
And I'm gonna tell you that that has been down in the custodian's room. It was never brought up here, and it was never signed.
I should say I had it.
So gladly, or he called in and, and also Cameron helped us with that. And I went down and I found it, and it's still not signed, so he would like permission to have this prom on April twenty-fifth. And I'm sure he's probably nervous, because he doesn't have a venue.
April twenty-fifth is the day?
Yeah, we, and I think we turned it in last May, maybe?
Yeah.
We've never heard of it yet. That's, that's very inexcusable. Which should have not happened that way. I'm sorry.
That's fine. I just, I, I wanted to get things going and, and make sure I got on the agenda just to ask. So if it's not gonna work out, then we just need to move on.
There's no reason why I can't.
You know, the only issue is we use the same custodian and the janitorial stuff that was used, you know, like.
Our policies always been that it is, courthouse is available for any of the four high schools that have Carroll County students going through. You and Delphi Carroll, Rossville are twin lakes. The only cost to you is the janitorial supplies for the customer. For the customer, right?
Custom.
Yeah.
And I'd like to have security, hire the reserves. Can't make it do that.
They usually do that, have, I don't remember them ever having a reserve.
Reserve come up here, allow.
Is that right? The only one I ever came to was yours, but any length of time was at Rossville, two or three years ago, four years ago, time's gone by. There wasn't any need for any security for that one, because there was about twenty people here, but anyway.
He also filed his insurance, it's all connected, everything was fine, it's just the.
So we just need to give approval for the date?
Yes, and then we'll have to tell the new janitor that he has his first obligation.
Well, we have to, we'll hire a janitor for that date. Yeah, we'll get something done for it.
I mean, we'll be here afterwards to help clean up and do all that stuff, too. My only other question is when we can set up? We don't have a lot of decorations that we've talked about. I mean, this place is. It's on a Saturday, but we were wondering if it would be possible on a Friday?
Just a Friday afterward?
Yeah.
Yeah, and now, Friday, you're talking about all day Friday? You're talking about Friday after?
Friday evening, Friday evening.
And that's usually, usually set up with the custodian on that day and Saturday.
I don't have an issue with as long as our custodians available. If not, I'll try to make myself available to come up there.
One of us should be able to come in and take care of it.
And like I said, there's, there shouldn't be a lot, maybe hang some lights, or, I mean, this place is beautiful as it is, so we don't have a whole lot of stuff to do.
We're gonna need all decorated up for the prom. I was, my prom was in here, one of my proms.
Well, I have seen some proms in here that were, I've seen it, it's ready to go when it starts, and they're beautiful.
I don't want nobody up past the first floor or anything.
Maybe you could talk Cameron into that.
No, you can see us exactly.
Yeah, well, they use the stairways for pictures.
Yeah, and we've had tables thrown all around this.
And that was our thought, too, for the second floor, put a few tables up there.
All the offices should be locked, so we should do it, too.
Yeah. Or perhaps, maybe stay away from third floor.
Right, no, we don't wanna go, we don't wanna have to deal with supervising that anyways, so keep everything first floor, a few tables on the second floor, and that's it. A DJ in here, hear some music, and that's about it.
Well, it sounds interesting. We, we certainly welcome you in here. This is the people's house, it belongs to, to you and the people of Carroll County, so that's wonderful. I need a motion for somebody to grant this. Motion approved and second for Delphi to use, Delphi Community High School to use this for prom on April twenty-fifth, and they will also need it for the evening of April the twenty-fourth for setup. All in favor of that motion, please say aye.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
I'll get with you when we get a custodian, okay? Then you can talk to them.
We'll just use Cameron as middleman.
Yep.
Now, if you come up, I'm sorry that we had to run you up the back.
Thank you.
Just wanted to update you on the van. So I got a quote from Service Pro last week, and they get the transfer on Thursday. They add a minimum five hundred again, so both quotes have been about the same. He did go into detail and explain, though, that when they put the oxidizing machine or whatever it is inside, it will break down the seals, so that they.
Wait.
It'll be like the door seals, the window seals. Those have to be replaced.
So I don't know if you want me to go further and go ahead and do it, or if we wanna start talking about the new vehicle. I've been on several calls this weekend, and the transmissions light slipping or jumping now, too. After Christmas, a call I went on, the service light was on, it's off now, so I don't know what you want me to do.
Do you pick the power completely off of it, like disconnect the battery completely?
Not like we, well, no.
Because I know when you, in your car, if you shut the power off completely disconnected, it does set off all kinds of codes and makes things.
Look, I think you do, they do that.
We have so many issues with this.
And I.
It was thought you.
It's not gonna guarantee to necessarily get absolutely everything, obviously, as deep as it's getting, it's, it's in there. And, and the longer they leave that machine in there, the quicker it'll break down the seals, because it's deep in there, so, I mean, it's kind of one of those, how long do you? It's, it kills it, but it won't prevent it. It will kill what's back there.
You can come back, seriously, get some moisture in?
Yeah.
More warmer. We're just beating the dead horse.
Yeah. So with that, I do have the quotes that we got in the fall.
For a new van?
For a pickup.
Oh, you want pickup with the top?
Well, we need some on a four by four, because we've had issues. And the headlights have also been going off when one of my deputies tried to.
Did he both of them?
Both what?
The headlights?
Nah, nah, they're both went off, though. Ted, do you want one?
Sure.
These were just what we've loaded so far, so one is, the one for the old ones is without the topper, without lights. This, the one from Andy Moore is with lights, with topper, everything, but a detail.
Are the lights that can be transferred?
Depends on the year of the lights. I think that's a two thousand seven model, the lights that are in it will not transfer and not probably to.
It won't transfer, is it?
It won't, not probably.
Who uses, the gentleman saves a bunch of money.
And I.
I think I had to install those, too, I believe. I think, yeah, I think JD took it down there, huh? To install them.
You don't have any budget for this at all, do you?
I don't even have a budget for equipment right now.
You have no budget for equipment? Well, you're gonna have to have new gurney and everything for this.
Well, on that, I haven't done anything with it yet, but Terry Moore with Burlington, Tom Marshall, had a brand new one, and I have it because he needed it to get rid of it, like he needed the space. It is actually downstairs right now in the communication room. We would have to purchase it from him. I mean, he wanted five hundred for it, because it had never been used, but I told him right now, we'll store it and we'll discuss that, because I didn't wanna put it into the, our, our cot has not been operating fully, so a new one would be great.
I think it's older than both of us put together.
Well, wholly, too, right?
Exactly. And I didn't wanna put this, I didn't wanna bring the new one up until we have them all taken care of, because there's no point in putting a new cot in there and.
Is this a government pricing?
Yes. So they're about, I mean, they're about the same when you add the, like I said, the one doesn't have topper and lights, things like that, so the other one does, so we need factor those in.
Have you checked the Rams, Dodge, Dodge?
Yes, we, well, the Dodge.
A Ram I recall.
I know they're.
I reached out to two different dealers and let messages with their government purchasing guy, and he hadn't got back to them.
But they also make a van that's four wheel drive, too. You want, kinda like a Mercedes van or some, or Ford van that, like a.
Sprinter.
Right.
Not Sprinter, but.
They're making those a four wheel drive.
They are, but the problem that you're gonna run into is if you have a body that's been, and if it's, you know, any.
You really don't want it in the van with you, right?
The smell will, uh.
It would be nice.
It's just a.
Better to put it back and shut, right?
I know a lot of, I think a lot of women started to go to truck pickups.
That's a good YouTube old GPS man.
What is your?
How much was the topper for the Chevrolet? I don't think it's gonna cost them.
We didn't, we didn't give it a vote for it. I mean, it, it had to be outsourced, did it not, correct?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, it's custom, yeah, so.
Is that a special topper, type topper?
Uh, it's probably gonna be a higher rise topper, it sticks up above the cab a little bit. It's probably gonna be able to put two bodies in there at least.
Does it have to be a brand new one?
That's up to you.
Driving an oh-seven, right, right now?
It was used when we got it.
Yeah.
But see, this is where we're, no warranty. No warranties.
All right. Let me throw that out.
I know, I like. Well, so far, I'd like to go with the GM one if we did anything, because another six thousand might go to hurt, and ain't gonna be no forty-two like the Ford. And we're buying local. But I'm, I'm to the point where we need a new vehicle on this, and I'm tired of dealing with this thing. I'd like to take it to the Corridors, front it over.
I don't wanna you do it.
Use the third quarter. All right, we need to send these to the council.
Yes, right. This is, this is beyond the, the legal.
We can say you can buy it, but we've stopped for it to the council, then they have to find the money for it.
So Ted, should we, how do we request, what's the best way to request it? Does the council, does it have, or go and ask for it, or is it? Is there, is there something that we need, when we send this to the council with our consideration?
You want to state it that way?
That's it?
Or with the recommendation?
Yeah, I, I really.
They want you to recommend it before they.
That's what I'm, or it's not much of a recommended issue, we need to send them. I, my, my opinion is we need a different vehicle. I don't know that we need a brand new one. I don't know, I don't want a piece of junk. And I don't know if the council thinks they have the money for it. I think it's up, up to them.
They would need to know what fund you wanna take it out of, like your King Cap or, or, or something other, the name decided, like Riverboat or whatever.
Well, it's kind of an emergency, because names are, we just can't throw them in the ambulances.
We meeting tomorrow? Tomorrow, where?
On the edit.
That's what it's about.
Can't bring nothing else up, because it's already been there. I could say that we strongly.
And go shoot in whatever.
Ask the council to, to find funding for.
Make the motion, Steve.
Send this to the council to highly recommend, to purchase a vehicle for the corner, because we're just, we're stuck. All we're gonna do is just, with that saying, putting woodstake on a pig?
We gotta, we have our best kid here to really take it.
Right. Well, they'll have to be, they'll have to, we have to, we have to get at least sixty thousand for her to get the equipment and the van, just for the truck.
Sixty?
Up to sixty. Because those earnings cost nine to ten thousand.
What?
Is that earnings?
I have, I have one brand new one, we have the two that are in there now.
But they're.
I don't know what you want us to try, clean what you don't want to try.
Put one of those in the van, and it sits there, and it gets moisture, it's just gonna go into the new vehicle. I mean, I like to, I'm gonna make the motion to go to the council, request at least sixty thousand for new equipment and van for the prom. And then she can pick which one she wants.
Pick a vehicle.
Vehicle.
Vehicle and equipment, is that you saying?
You have a second?
Yeah, if that's right in mind.
Well, they can decide it now.
Yeah, they can decide the amount, but at least, at least we can put that out there, let, you know, for the cost, and then not have to go back and try to do an additional. Doesn't mean she's gotta spend the whole sixty.
I understand.
She still has to bring them back to us to, to say, hey, okay, we can do this one and we can do that.
Okay, so we have a motion on the floor and a second for a request to the council for funding of up to sixty thousand dollars for new vehicle equipment for the county corner. Did I say that right?
So are you gonna specify where this money's coming from, or you're letting them decide?
I'd let them decide, because they're the ones who turn the finances. I, I got person or council to do it, I think.
Do we have to specify where it comes from? No, okay, so the motion just stands away from set. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion passed.
So with that, do you want me to clean it, or we just gonna hold off the clean?
Don't clean.
So your transfer is probably go back later on? I would do it right away, though. No, I would do it right away.
Later, we'll figure out, we'll, obviously, that works out.
It has to stay right.
Yeah.
Till you transfer it back.
Next item, thank you, thanks for where you are. Yep, Ted?
No, something, agreement for doing the boundary survey for the jail site, I need your approval, and I do not know.
We have a gentleman here, I think it's four.
Colin BFNS.
Just get to her.
Oh.
Did I skip over you?
Yeah.
Oh, I missed. I'm sorry.
You're fine. I just wanted to provide an update on the scale. The state had stepped in and actually has requested for a letter of variance from the scale company, due to the fact that typically you have to have an entrance and an exit, and you have to be able to drive through the scale. But they're reconsidering. So that's where we're at.
I didn't understand. You're supposed to have an entrance and an exit, but they're gonna do what?
They're gonna reconsider that. So the scale will be in the building.
Right, that's what we decided.
Right. And by state law, they want an entrance and an exit, and you have to be able to drive through. I don't have that.
Why couldn't we put it right in front of the door? Where you back in, explain, and.
Well, that would be more, that would be more money.
More money than being inside?
But they are looking into making an exception.
Okay. I think we need that scale. I mean, we got, we got some money out of the corporate department. We get this scale and we eliminate if we're gonna have transportation or not every year.
Right.
Because we set the price, and they'll come in, and we know we're getting our money.
So I'm just waiting.
Well, I appreciate the update.
How are you waiting, the state, something you said?
Yes.
Two, do we need to call?
I already made the phone calls, it's the scale company.
Okay.
So I'm just waiting to hear back.
Oh, scale company, yes.
Hulk, Hulk scale.
And you'll have to let us know what's going on.
Yeah.
We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Computer?
Now, I'm sorry. Please.
Morning. Kyle calls with a puzzle in Harrison, Cypress. Before you have agreement for the boundary survey supplemental agreement number two, Carroll County Jail is for the boundary survey. We'll increase the original amount by seven thousand, seven hundred and seventy dollars.
And why did you dump so much?
That this is for the survey.
Right, the original amount was for what?
The original amount was thirty-three thousand, thirty dollars, and this will be seven thousand, seven hundred and seventy dollars more to get the boundary survey, which will include a title of court.
So the other, the other surveyor wasn't part of the boundary survey?
Right. This is for us and modern, for bonding. Correct me if I'm wrong, Ted.
Yes, that's correct. The, the other survey did not include a boundary survey for the actual site, which has to be parcel walk, or it has to be a split of a parcel, has to be a separate legal ownership. The county can't own it, because the county doesn't have the money capacity with, as a general obligation, and has to be done as a, as a lease. So the, the property's gonna be deed to the building corporation, at least by the county or the jail.
And it's kind of a little soft cost, building field, right?
Yes, it is, yes.
Why wasn't this figured in to begin with?
Because the, it wasn't known necessarily at the very beginning how the, the financing was gonna be structured. And, and you don't, you know, you don't make that assumption, and spend the money to do it, which you have to.
And so this forty thousand, eighty dollars is it that you guys know is gonna be, be done and ready to go forward?
You don't know.
Plus another issue.
It is a virgin site, where I can tell you from experience, that's what you want, because you don't wanna have to.
It's right down the center.
And be able to.
Any barrel.
Nineteenth century butt top shoes sitting out, so.
Seventy-seven, hundred and seventy dollars a usual customary fee for, I mean, to me it seems high, to use the standard.
Oh, yeah, that's our usual.
How long will it take you to do it?
I'll have to check our schedule, our surveyor that does these, I'll have to check with them, like, exactly the timeframe of it.
I mean, does it take one day?
Yeah, it'd probably take a, well, it'll take a probably day or two to get up on the site, and then probably a week to process.
That's a pretty good day, Ted.
Do we have any overturn to do some of this?
We can reduce whatever, so I can, I can. Give it another time frame.
Probably just delay everything now.
Yeah, I, I would be concerned about the delay, and also the fact that they've done the other survey.
Right. Is there any negotiation on this? Like armor. We need to save some money.
Well, if there's something that we can take out, but I, I'm, I want to talk to surveyor about that. And the project manager, Michelle Lox, if you want us.
She could get here later, get the.
You got the B T.
I'd like to drive the news down, but I said they would, but I think we might be against it.
This. Flat. It's just a rectory, right?
But they're gonna do the whole boundary of the whole property.
No way. But it's just for this property, right?
Correct, but it's, it's, it's kinda like around, around the trees, or get all of it done.
Or they.
Yeah, and there's quite a bit of.
I know the plan was, I thought you'd be done. Getting down the eight quarters, almost.
Through it?
Yeah. You have to go out and find all the landmarks and stuff.
Play them like, just kind of make legal descriptions.
This is the.
Few things I go over there with the license for the jail site, so.
All right.
Man, you always get with.
Do you?
Sometimes. Sometimes. How soon does this need to be done, Ted?
Well.
Let's see. Go back to this.
We're just trying to save as much money as we can.
I understand.
So I thought when we did this, it included everything. So I thought when we did this, it included everything. And it's always, there's always gonna be a loophole somewhere.
I guess my question would lead back to, how, how much time will this survey take?
Well, uh, it says, uh, it's gonna be March twenty-seventh, we need to.
Oh, so, so it's just not for a whole week, it's like a couple months?
Well, that's when they're gonna hand it to us.
Correct. Then they gotta pay their bill, you know that. Surveyor, you're not cheap.
Well, I can see that, but the firm in Cypress is doing very good company, and we're, I think, that bridge right there, that outstanding, or, I just.
If we, if this today, can you go back and say, hey, we can go for a little less, and we can still be in a contract?
Yep, I'll talk to Michelle tomorrow.
Motion to approve supplemental agreement number two, correct, seventy-seven. Seventy dollars. If they can cut us a break, I appreciate it.
You're saying up to that amount?
For the additional.
And then the only other thing I have, uh, is I need a signature for the letter of intent to I D M. Uh, rule five, storm water, to I D M.
We're gonna do a hundred. We still got the motion.
Yeah, this is separate from, this is totally separate.
What was the motion? I missed it.
Motion to go ahead and do the supplemental agreement number two for the additional seventy thousand, seven hundred and seventy dollars, which makes the total of forty thousand, eighty dollars. And if you can go back and talk to his supervisor, see if they can cut us a little bit of break, and we still agree on that.
You made the motion. I'm sorry, you did all in favor of that motion, please say aye.
Aye. Aye. We need all three of these signed?
I guess, I'm not gonna cut it all, but, motion passed.
So do you need to change yours and say up to, where you sign it?
No, it, uh, includes that now, so it's okay, the motion's okay.
Then if they can come back and do it cheaper, then that can be changed.
It could be. Because the, the obligation to change it is, it, it's. Uh, you either put it off until February, or. I mean, you can put it off until February, but I don't know what that does.
Yeah, because of the later number.
Yeah.
I guess when I.
But you need to do a refund, right?
They're gonna just, they're signing it that it's okay to be increased to seventy-seven, seventy.
We, we have had a motion as, at an election, and have voted the majority to endorse this contract. So we should do it, go ahead. I'm interested in what, you have there the rule five thing, and you're.
I mean, that's, that's not related to this.
Yeah.
You have to get.
We've already taken care of this, so.
Yeah.
Right now?
Yeah.
I'll sign one. How many copies do we need, one for each? How many copies?
One, two, two, two.
One, yeah, one for you, one for.
Now, to move ahead with the, the second part there.
Uh, so I've got a, uh, the, the intent to I D M that we need to have signed, uh, for rule five, storm water.
And rule five says what?
It's just basically saying permitting us to, that we are aware that we're gonna put the storm water to the, to the creek.
Ted?
Yeah, it's the standard for, for construction, where you're.
Where you're stormwater?
Yeah, uh, stormwater.
Okay.
And it doesn't, it's not a financial, I mean, you were subject to rule five, whether you, you know, I mean, there are financial obligations that flow from rule five, that you're not committing money to this, it's just.
So do we need a motion before I endorse it?
Might as well, it's, it's for you, it probably could have just been signed, but it doesn't hurt. So the notice of intent to I D M, uh, for compliance with rule five.
Correct.
That would be the motion. To authorize the chairman.
Just one second.
We got a motion, would you like to say that? I got a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Probably the first time you've had something free.
Probably right.
Yes, that's Ted, worded it.
Just assign.
To, or as the chairman, sign those, ten, two, I D M. Well, proposed. Jail site.
Okay, I'm not quite sure how this should be signed. Ted? This says printed name of project owner. Is that Carroll County?
Uh, yeah.
And then it says signature of project owner. I'm not the project owner.
On the previous.
Uh, I'm seeing, board, uh, board of commissioners.
So I should write board of commissioners, and where it says printed name?
Yeah, Carroll County Board of Commissioners.
Carroll Board of Commissioners, it has on the previous page, but.
You got it, counting along there, but it's printed. Okay, so, yeah, Carroll County Commissioners, it's already on the front, so you, you just sign the second line. No need to.
So we can do the first one?
Uh, Colin can.
Maybe.
Put that in here. Put this printed on there.
I didn't write it down. So what's your, what is your name?
Colin Sol.
Thank you. Acumen hardship claim. What do we decide?
We have to say what's new.
That's right. And then we want the pleasure of it.
I think it needs a new half.
You gonna make a motion out of that?
I'll make a motion that, uh, rule, end up five hundred ninety-one twenty-five, from the bill remaining, balance will be five twenty-one. Five ninety-one twenty-five for the individual effect.
You're cutting it down to five ninety-one twenty-five?
Yes, the display in there.
We can decide how it's gonna take, my pleasure.
They can make that.
Um, yeah, they'll, that can.
That will get out in the back.
Yeah, yeah. Um, I didn't bring my copy, I didn't bring my copy, so. If you can just sign one of those.
Well, I need my turn to go.
I'll second.
I'll second.
You'll second?
Okay, so I have a motion and a second to make to, to cut the bill by fifty percent to five ninety-one twenty-five?
Yep.
All in favor of that, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed.
Please may go back there. Do you want please back?
Okay, so we got it.
Thank you.
Hardship granted, uh. Okay. Can't let you go out this other comments. Thank you.
Hello, good morning.
Are we at the end of our agendas, or anything else on the agenda? So, or anything anyone wants to bring up? Yes, ma'am?
I just wanted to let you guys know that Raycom is on site today and tomorrow installing the radios.
So you think by tomorrow, they're gonna be turned on and used?
That's what we're being told.
Thanks for that, Dave.
Anything else?
I have one thing I forgot, quick minute.
Fine.
Two seconds.
I'll just get the, um, this is just a copy of the, my two thousand nineteen report, if you guys want to look over it.
Okay, thank you.
We actually did seventeen forty-nine. Now, when you look on the stat sheet, you'll see there's eighteen thirty-nine or something like that, that's actually how many reports were generated. So if we go on accident, there's seven patients, and we do reports on seven patients, it doesn't count, or it's never, it counts, it's numbers, reports to be done, so.
Thanks, man.
Yeah, I will go through that, you can do, you also have to look through, if you have any questions.
Now, anything else? Just here.
Just for your knowledge, twenty-eight in-house today, and fourteen out of county.
All right.
Twenty-eight in-house, and fourteen in county, or out of county.
What we paying out of county, thirty-five?
Thirty-seven fifty.
Five hundred and twenty-five dollars a day? Fourteen? How many times is that? So we're spending almost thirty-seven hundred dollars a week, out of these, uh, counties.
That's still pretty cheap to convert fourteen million, but the thing is that, uh. So altogether, we got forty-two, did I hear the numbers right, forty-two prisoners. Which is down considerably from where we've been at times, but. Still over capacity. Do you have a comment for us?
Well, actually, I'm gonna kind of follow up with, I think it was your last meeting, or the meeting before, you were talking about doing something with the KFOs, Steve? An area plan, and.
I wanna give my area plan guy the chance to get settled and get going, and keep moving in the right direction. Um, he's just gotta have time to get it going, and then I've got all the face in the world in my area plan right now, because it's a, the new group, and they're working hard to get stuff done.
Well, the problem is, they have yet to determine which is the official ordinances.
They're working on that.
Right.
You can't walk in and just say, hey, this is it.
No, I'm sorry, Steve, that was a position that was fully funded when Wagner was here. This has been going on for years.
Right, now we got a whole new guy.
He is continuing to permit, not knowing which are the official ordinances.
I think we finally got it down, he's just updating the books to where everybody's, had issues of everybody turning in their books.
It's a lot of I thinks, and you're continuing to permit.
Because we have to.
Well, which ordinances are they using then, the approved or the not approved?
No, that we have to, Mr. Yates.
No, that's, you're the commissioners. You are the commissioners. You have to sign the ordinances.
We have it. What, what, which ones are we on now?
It's oh-six, oh-five, we found the copy evidence in the ordinance book in the commissioners' room in there. It states that.
And that's me, Cameron.
Minutes from the area plan, we struck the two boards out, where in ever's book, it's not in ever's.
So that's why we get, we're getting, everybody's books are gonna be the same now. We had issues with people turning in their books when we get done.
I just want everyone to be held to the same standards, and them not to change.
I think we do too.
No, they have changed.
Are we talking about the distance it has to be from something?
No, we are not, we are talking about actual verbiage.
So if somebody wants to put in a new KFO, everybody's the same.
Of the last nine, not everybody has been held to the same verbiage. Just making the statement.
Anything else to come before us? Motion to approve, or? Second, we're.
So what you get to this time?